Expectations. She's a thoughtful, strong leader who aims to somehow please all the different stakeholders, and that's not easy. She's made some organizational changes, which have reduced the overhead and put more money and focus back in the classroom, which I appreciate. She's accomplished so much and kept moving our school system forward while doing what many other districts are still struggling to accomplish, opening their doors during COVID. I cannot discuss this point enough, since it's important that we don't forget how many could not open for many reasons, but Dr. Jones listened to the community, worked tirelessly with her team and us last summer, and I know in speaking to parents and kids how appreciative we all are. It's impossible to predict how someone will handle a pandemic, but Dr. Jones' work ethic, calmness, and strength came through. As part of her request for an extension, Toni has said that she's enjoying her work in the Greenwich Public Schools and is looking forward to many more years to come. I'm also looking forward to many more years with Toni as our superintendent.
Further discussion, Ms. Kowalski, did you want to speak?
Sure. So I have, in general, really, three points, and I've raised these with all of the fellow board members in separate discussions, but I do think there are a couple of things that need to be addressed. Obviously, I agree with some of the sentiments that were expressed by Mr. Bernstein and Ms. Stowe about Dr. Jones, and I also have some criticisms of Dr. Jones, and she knows some of them. We've had conversations about them. I think that moving at the speed that we are, and we do still do as a board have time under Dr. Jones' current contract, but I do think that it makes prudent sense for the board to send out an anonymous survey. Otherwise, I would call it a 360 review for those in the business world, we'd call it, to the administrators, staff, and parents, because we've heard from parents this evening from both sides to give us a clear approval and disapproval of Dr. Jones. But I think it would be prudent to have that review of Dr. Jones as her role as superintendent prior to this board making a decision to make sure that we have all of the information available to us that we can grab before I think we make a decision of this nature. It is one of the most important decisions that this board makes, and I think that it would behoove us to understand her as a leader and what her administrators and staff think, and well as the community as a whole.
Further discussion? All right, on the motion.
She doesn't have a motion. She's just coming.
All right. Well, this is discussion on the motion, so if there's discussion on the motion, this is the time.
Yeah.
You have further discussion?
Yeah, I have further points that I'd like to make.
Go ahead.
I also think, and we've talked about this before, that with respect to the renewal or extension of Dr. Jones' in contract, I think that there's one provision in there that is noticeably absent from her contract. I know we've talked about and how it seems that these are cookie cutter contracts as it relates to superintendents in the state of Connecticut, but it is not a cookie cutter contract as it relates from a national perspective. When we look at other contracts, and those are the one thing that's glaringly missing from this, is a reciprocal clause for both of us to have the right to terminate the contract without cause. Dr. Jones is able to, under Section B8, to terminate and to walk away, and we, as a board and as a community, don't have that ability to do that. We only have the ability under a mutual release, but that means that we have to have a mutual understanding that the relationship needs to end. And here, we end up in a situation where, if one of us doesn't think that the relationship is working, that's fine, but when both of us don't, when one of us disagrees, we don't have that option. And I think we're putting ourselves, as a board and as a community, as a disadvantage to not have something as simple as a reciprocal right in that contract. The other piece that I would raise here is I understand the desire by my fellow board members to extend Dr. Jones' contract by two years, to extend it to June 30th of 2024. Look, my proposal on this, and what I could get comfortable with, is something shorter than that, for various reasons, one of which is that three, maybe four, of the board members will not be sitting here in November, and as I mentioned, it's one of the most important decisions we make as a board, that we should see what the election holds and what that new board coming in thinks, and how they would like to move forward, as that is a clear representation of the community's views by having the newly elected board members present and making the important decisions. With that, I would suggest that perhaps the extension should not only be, should not be two years, but should be, at most, one year, in which it would be extended to June 30th, 2023, whereas the newly seated board in November could take up this issue and decide whether or not to extend Dr. Jones' contract even further at that point, giving credence to the fact that the community has spoken, and there'll be potentially four new board members that should be added to that decision, as opposed to strapping that newly seated board with a superintendent that maybe a majority of them don't like. Going back to my other point of why a reciprocal provision in the contract would make more sense, and I think we're doing ourselves as a board a complete and utter disadvantage by not making some very simple changes in the contract.
Discussion. Mr. Scher.
I think you had your hand up first. Okay. I'm not really saying much about this because I'm leaving the board, and I feel strongly, and I've told my colleagues this, we have this level of board turnover already known in advance, because board members have publicly declared what they're doing. At least three of us have publicly declared what we're doing. I don't think I should have this kind of voice in this decision. I mean, I could talk about all the reasons why it might be a good idea to keep Dr. Jones in extender contract. I could talk about all the reasons why I think otherwise. It's not important. What is important is I agree with what Ms. Kowalski has shared with board members previously, that it's not a good idea for an outgoing board to tie the hands of the incoming board, and the motion that Ms. Stowe put on the table ties the hands of the board, not only this board, it also ties the hands of the next board in the next election, which will be out in 2023. So we're not only tying the hands of one board that's incoming, we're tying the hands of two boards in the future by this proposal, given that's going to be maybe half the board turned over. I don't think, I thought there was a compromise to be had, and the compromise to be had was either or both, to signal to the community we didn't want turnover in the superintendent's office, but at the same time preserve the rights of the board that are going to be incoming and the public to express that through a public vote, which they will have an opportunity to do in November. It would have meant a shorter extension than the maximum that can be given. Ms. Stowe's proposal is to give the maximum that can be given under current contract law in Connecticut. I would have supported extending the superintendent's contract for an additional year, which would mean two years from now, so that everybody could get their feet wet and decide what they want to do. I also thought, and I liked the idea when, I'm amazed we're writing contracts that we don't have, the residents of Greenwich don't have reciprocal rights, and the contract is one-sided. I've spoken about this before. The response given by other board members has been, well, that's what's in the contract in Darien and New Canaan. Shocker. The attorney who wrote this contract for the Greenwich Board is also the attorney for those two towns, who wrote those contracts as well. So that, to me, is not a good rationale. I think it's just prudent that a board makes certain, and whatever the termination clause is, as an example, the termination clause, I think right now is the superintendent can notify us in 120 days. Okay, make it so we can do it in 120 days. If that gets changed to 180 days, great. 180 days, and then our clause is 180 days. I don't care what the number is. What I care about is that we have, as a community, the flexibility to have a reciprocal right to what the superintendent would have in a contract that we write, so that we can make the decisions that the community may need to make, and the community's not disadvantaged in doing that. I don't want the superintendent disadvantaged either. It just seems to me it should be equal. And then to the last point is, I'm very uncomfortable voting one way or the other on this contract, because I've served this community for a really long time, and I've learned that as much as I think I do know, there's frequently stuff I don't know. So I'm not arrogant enough. I'm not self-assured enough. I'm not Napoleon complex enough that I can sit here and say that I have any idea right now what the staff thinks about their leader, which I think is an important input. I'd really like to know that. They may think their leader is the greatest thing since sliced bread, and they want me to go out there and get the longest contract possible. Okay? I'd really like to have that piece of information. I don't know where the public is on the superintendent. I've heard, I've been serving for a long time, and right now, half my mail, not even half, a lot of my mail is some unhappy people, and there's a lot of it. And my telephone rings a lot, much to my wife's chagrin. She wants me to stop talking about the Board of Ed and spend more time on my company, because she has to listen to it at home. But then I also see emails that are very supportive of what has happened with the superintendent. So I'm sitting here candidly, I don't have the information I need to make this decision. And I've been through this a couple times, and usually it's one way or the other. This time it's not. So I thought the idea that Ms. Kowalski had to get a 360, by the way, that's standard practice for executives in the real world, not in this weirdo school world, seemed pretty reasonable to me, but I don't know. My fellow board members will have to decide whether or not they, from the limited information they have, they can make the decision. I can't.
Ms. Downey.
I think there's a bit of irony as we talk about how much we hear from the community and then saying we don't have enough information to make a decision. I think we hear from the community repeatedly, we all know in our inboxes on any given issue, so to say we don't know how people feel about the superintendent, it's a little disingenuous to me. The fact of the matter is, this town doesn't have unanimity on anything. So I think to say we're going to survey people to get an answer isn't going to yield an answer any more than the voluminous emails that we already get. So I respectfully say I don't think that's a productive use of time. I think also, we as elected officials, that is our job. Our job is to make the decisions based on the information we've gathered over an extensive period of time. In terms of this board making a decision about superintendent's contract, this board, half the board turns over every other year. To say that we shouldn't make a decision because it ties the hand of future boards, again, is not fulfilling our role or our job that we were elected to do. And frankly, half this board is new, and we could have said, well, gee, you shouldn't have hired Dr. Jones, and where would we all be sitting now, based on that same analysis? And we do have a termination clause. We don't have a termination-for-no-reason clause. So I am satisfied that, should there be an issue with Dr. Jones, which I do not anticipate happening, we would be able to avail ourselves of that opportunity. But I think going back and renegotiating, and it's not a minor point, it would be a fundamental point to our contract, is not appropriate at this moment in time. So I respectfully disagree with the points that have been made thus far, and I wholly support the motion.
Ms. Hirsch.
I personally fully support extending Dr. Jones' contract. Not only would this help provide consistency and stability for Greenwich Public Schools, which is something that the community has consistently asked the board to do, but with the countless articles discussing early retirement resignations and resignations of superintendents across the country this past year, including recent articles from Education Week and the New York Times amongst many local papers throughout the country from the biggest districts like New York City, LA, all the way across the 50 states, I think it speaks volumes about Dr. Jones' dedications to our students, staff, and the community of Greenwich that she's asked to extend her contract. As I said before, someone once said the true test of leadership is how well you function in a crisis, and I would agree. Unfortunately, this year, we've had several major crises, and Dr. Jones has handled each and everyone professionally and with a measured sense of control. Last year, we commended her for her professionalism and responsiveness, and for the hard work she has done, and we've done so again this year. In a year like no other with constantly moving targets, she's kept her eyes on the things that mattered most, our students, the needs of our students and our staff, emotionally, physically, and educationally. She's taken constructive criticism and the feedback garnered from many parents and worked tirelessly to ensure that our schools could open their doors this fall, and improve the options for remote students. That was greatly appreciated, not just by families in our district, but also commended by districts throughout Connecticut as a model. And I think one of the most important things that makes a superintendent a good superintendent, and having only worked as a Board of Education member with one, I've had the opportunity to work with countless supers and interim supers over the past few years in other advocacy, educational advocacy roles. Being responsive to criticism and making the effort to make the changes being asked of you is exceptionally important, and Dr. Jones has shown us her willingness to do that. I know we've made some recommendations, and Mr. Bernstein shared those with you as to what we'd like to see going forward, and I'd like to be able to give you the time to make those, take the opportunity to make the changes that we've asked you to do and move our district forward as promised, as part of the goals that you set for yourself and the goals that we set for you the year prior, and I'm sure will be in the goals that we probably will set for you going forward. You've successfully navigated the challenging waters of budget uncertainty, and you've made sure that our educators and students have had what they've needed, when they've needed it. You've met every challenge and answered every question asked, and I know because I've asked a lot of them myself, and they are always answered. You continue to provide our families with consistent flow of information. You've increased your communication with the community as well, and this year has provided you with many unique challenges. You've helped our educators navigate the ways to teach in-person and remote learners simultaneously. I hope we don't have to figure out how to do that again. You've created an entirely new remote school and filled them with teachers and substitutes roles throughout our district amidst a teacher shortage. That's pretty impressive. Either way, I think that you really continue to be a tremendous asset to the Greenwich Public Schools, its students, the board, and our community, especially with the extraordinary events and challenges you've confronted with your time here thus far. Personally, I can say working with you has been an incredible experience. I'm sure it's a feeling that is mirrored by many, and I'd like to thank you. And with that support, I really feel giving you the opportunity to make the necessary changes and improvements for the education given to our students and the support of our staff through curriculum and professional development. I'd like to give you that time.
Call to question. Still people that want to speak, Mr. Scher, Ms. Stowe.
Just real fast. I've hired a lot of CEOs in my career. We've found a good one. We don't want to lose you.
I do want to say a couple of things. One, the superintendent contract, yep, it's the same as Darien and New Canaan, because it's the CAPS form. Yes, it was drafted by the attorney that happens also do work for us, but it is the Connecticut Association of Superintendents of Schools that actually adopted that form. It's used across the state. In terms of the termination provision, there's a couple ways that it goes. One, mutual consent. If both parties decide things aren't working out, if things are that bad with the board and the superintendent, neither one of them wants to be here, okay? Two, the superintendent can give notice. We've actually had that happen twice in my recollection, and we actually extended it from 90 days in a prior contract to 120 days for Dr. Jones. Everything in a contract, by the way, is negotiable once a party decides they want out of it. And then third, for causes, as Ms. Downey said, we actually, if there were potential cause, we would work with the superintendent to rectify. If it can't be rectified, the superintendent goes. That's the protection you need. Superintendents have no tenure. They are not like teachers or administrators. The contract is basically the job security that they get, and it's tenuous at best in a lot of places, and this is one of them. So I can't imagine the message we would send to a community saying, well, we want to be able to get rid of you anytime we feel like getting rid of you, or we only want you for one year because the next group is going to toss you out on your ear. We have a statutory responsibility to select a superintendent of schools to run our district. I take that seriously, as I do all of my other statutory responsibilities. As was mentioned, we turned over four members who inherited Dr. Jones. When I joined the board eight years ago, got lots of experience in this now, we inherited a superintendent. That's how this works, folks. We don't basically wait. We don't say to Dr. Jones, you know that there's an election in November, we're going to see what the outcome is. Let that group figure it out. That group has never been on a Board of Ed possibly. Some of them may, the returning members might, but there'd be members who wouldn't. I don't know. I think we rely on the people that have experience with you. We've had two years of experience with you at this point. I would like to see more years of experience with you. The board picks the super. We've been elected by the community. That's our responsibility, just as it's our responsibility to ask for the budget that we need, our responsibility to carry out things like student expulsion hearings. There are certain things we do. That is our job. I would like to continue to be able to do our job, and I think having you here enables us to do that. You have been responsive to the board needs. You were the first to admit when something isn't right, and you are the first to make the change to fix it. So I am quite pleased to support your extension. And with that, I am going to call the question. So Bernstein is a yes.
Peter, let me speak really quickly. Wait, wait, wait.
Sorry, Megan.
I will be quite brief.
Hold on one second. Hang on one second. Let Aaron get this up. Okay, go ahead.
I will be quite brief, because honestly, all of my points have been said, so at the risk of sounding like a broken record or too repetitive, but I fully support the extension of Dr. Jones' three-year contract. As elected officials, it is our duty, and you've been consistent. She's been consistent. She has had an impressive work ethic, and she's filled the cabinet with some really fantastic new hires, and I really look forward to seeing the work that she continues to do.
All right. Thank you. With that, calling the question. So the question is to extend the superintendent's contract through 2024? Yes.
Yes, June 30, 2024.
Yes. Bernstein is a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
I could get behind one year, but not two. No.
So that's a no. Okay. Olson?
Yes.
And Scher?
No.
That passes six-two. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dr. Jones. All right. With that, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, if you all are with me for a moment so I can bring it up. I'd like to make a motion to request the additional funding for the repairs of North Myannis and the alternate space-related costs in the amount of $2,597,912. Is there a second?
Sure.
Ms. Stowe, thank you. All right. I think Mr. O'Keefe, you are going to be our chief explainer tonight.
Good evening, everybody. So as you know, we have already received a partial interim appropriation for the North Myannis ceiling collapse in the amount of $2,055,000. And the rest of our initial request was deferred until we could go out to bid, which we have just done and completed yesterday. So just as a recap for what the $2,055 includes, by the way, can we get the chart loaded up? Mike, are you able to get that up?
I could get it up with the people in the building.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be able to see it in the room, but the board members have it. The board members have it. It's as you emailed it, and it's on Board Docs.
Okay. I'll be as descriptive as possible. Okay. So just to recap on what the $2,055 includes, it's $189,731 of emergency response remediation and demo, and it also includes $627,143 for the demo of the first and second floor areas requiring preventative work. It also includes $628,834 of repairs for areas that were damaged, so the damaged areas from the collapse. And then there's an additional $358,097 for alternative space-related costs, and most of that is predominantly made up of transportation for about 307 out of that 358. We also applied, given the uncertainty, given the fact that there wasn't a lot of knowledge, especially with regard to the rebuild for the preventative, we had applied a 20% contingency, which was relatively hefty. But at the end of the day, we were awarded $2,055. Since then, we went out to bid, and the process, as I mentioned, closed yesterday. Just as a little background, we had a good number of vendors that came in for the walkthrough at North Myannis, and at that walkthrough, a number of them commented that they would probably not likely bid, given the aggressive schedule, and they also cited, several of them cited, the fact that there was a lot of uncertainty in the pipeline of materials and supplies, so world shortage of things like gypsum and so on. In the end, when we closed at 10 o'clock yesterday, we only had one bid, and that bid is reflected on the proposal in the yellow section. So it's a total project cost of $4,652,912. That's the total project cost. Once we subtract from that the amount that was already awarded, the $2,055, what we're asking for is exactly what Peter had mentioned at the outset, $2,597,912. So when you look at the top of the chart, there are two amounts for the emergency response, remediation, and demo. That was already completed. Those two items for $189,731 and $60181, those are already completed, and those numbers are actuals. Then below that are the contents of the bid that was received yesterday, and you can see that there's a section called base bid plus alternatives, and the amount related to that in the bid was $1,411,284. And also, we anticipate a number of change orders that either were not explicitly spelled out in the RFP or were identified after the RFP was issued. Those add up to another $334,000. We also have estimated the cost of a dedicated project manager for six months in the amount of $72,000. And again, given uncertainty in the world markets, we believe that a contingency of 15% is warranted. So that adds another $272,593. So that would get our construction cost, including the two items that are mentioned as completed already, would bring you to $2,879,789. Then we get into the non-construction cost, what we classify as alternative space-related cost. The biggest one, and it's not yet closed, we have not yet closed, is the facility rental. We estimate that if we rent a facility from August to December, we estimate that it'll cost about $170,000 a month, so that would amount to $850,000. We are working with a site, and it's in legal review right now. So that number is a fairly good number. Transportation, the number has been updated. We had $307,000 in the original of $2,055. of $2,055. We added another $300,000 for the, for the transportation from September through December. And then we have some other items. So furniture fixtures and equipment totaling $68,702. Security-related equipment for $19,500. A small amount for custodial overtime and other staffing for $22,000. Moving expense, we already incurred $65,000 for the first move, and we anticipate another move to get everybody to the new facility. And then there would be another, another move back once the, once the work is completed. So we've added in a total of $195.00. That includes the $65,000 that's already been incurred. Storage container rentals of about $10,000. So when you add all that up from the facility rental down to the storage container rental, it's $1,773,123. Add that to the construction amount that I mentioned just earlier for $2,879,789. Gives us a total project cost of $4,652,912. And again, subtract from that funding already received of $2,055,000 yields a additional request of $2,597,912. So Dan is on. If you, if you have any technical questions, or I'm here as well, if you have any questions related to the numbers.
All right. Mr. Kelly.
Sean, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but if you could, for transparency purposes, I hate change orders. Nothing annoys me more than having change orders early on in the project. I'm sure they're justified, because we're doing everything as quickly as we can. But just for transparency sake, could you explain, or if you have the information on the change orders for me, please?
I think Dan would be better equipped to address that.
So, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Dan.
So Joe, would you mind repeating that question? I lost a little transmission there.
Sean had mentioned in his presentation that there was a couple of early change orders that changed the price of the bid. Just for transparency reasons, I just like to go over those change orders if you have that information. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have that information, it'd be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. It's not a problem. It's, it's, you know, I, I wouldn't want to call them change orders just yet. We have to come up with some kind of term for it. But these were items that were brought to our attention post-bid. And whether they were, whether they were brought up by our review of the documents, or brought up during the scope review with the apparent low bidder Werner Construction, there was some significant lapses in the, in the design documents. And that's probably due to how quickly we had to put these documents together. There's some items in there. I'll just put some big-ticket items out there. Painting, there was, there was a specification for painting, but it was not clear as to the extent of the painting that was expected. Pipe insulation, that was not visible during the documents being put together. It was hidden by the hung ceiling. I'm actually going to put that request in with the insurance company, but we wanted to get a price for it. So that's going to be part of the job. Window treatments, we didn't realize how damaged the window treatments were. They were rolled up at the time of the water infiltration, and water just sat in the shades. And we saw some visual evidence of mold growing, so we're replacing all the window shades. So those are just some of the items that we hit on as potential change orders. But they, well, in act, excuse me, they will in actuality become a change order.
Thanks, Dan. That was very helpful. Mr. Cher.
Sean, I, I've got a, and maybe Dan will answer it too. I want to be sure I understand what I'm looking at. The demo, the demo looks like it's coming in in line with what was estimated, right?
Yeah, pretty close.
Yeah. Okay. And then the 1.4 million is based on the RFP that, that was written in the specification that was done by the architect engineer?
That's correct.
Okay. And then Dan just explained, there's some other items that needed to be added. What's item number six, HVAC new compressor? Can you elaborate on what that item is, Dan?
Sure. The, we know that we did a, an HVAC upgrade there about 30 months ago, I think it was, well, less than that, about two years ago, it was completed. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. The, we had some damage to some of the HVAC lines coming back from the unit ventilators that are underneath the windows. We had to cut, excuse me?
You said that in a prior meeting.
Correct. So what we've, what we've seen is the controls of the new units, because the way the building is laid out, you've got some classrooms on the south side and some classrooms on the north side of the building, and we are unable to control the temperatures, the way the, this way the system was installed. By making this change now, we'll be able to, during a shoulder month, say, in April, when one side of the building is in the sun, and it's calling for air conditioning, the other side of the building is still in the shade or in the dark, calling for heat. Our current situation, we're not allowed to do that. The system doesn't allow for it. By making these changes.
It's an upgrade, and a good upgrade, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And then the, so the demo, 143172. So the total construction costs includes the demo?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, this alternate space facilities, where is this location?
Tony, you want to address that?
Yes, because we're in contract negotiations right now between our legal team and theirs. We can't say where it is. We hope that it will come to fruition in the next few weeks, and we'll be able to share more information.
Okay. Is the space already equipped as a school?
What I can say is it would be an excellent site for us to have as an alternative site.
I don't know what that means. I don't need her to identify the site. I need to know if it's equipped as a school, or there's going to be some other costs.
It would be an excellent site, and this is the cost that we would need, other than the items that you see here, moving our classrooms.
Yeah, I know, I see FFNE, but it's only 68,000. And I'm, I'm just kind of surprised that if it's a site that's, I mean, the last time you were here, Tony, you were talking, two times ago, you were talking about sites in Commerce Park, and you said they had been equipped as schools for somebody else, and you didn't know if they were available. But the important part was it had already been outfitted as a school, so it was usable that way. I see here FFNE of 68,000. This is going to be, what, how many classrooms? This is 10? No, 13, I think, was your ask?
We actually had, this, this site is a little bit different. There are 20 different spaces of X amount of square feet, and that we have it all calculated out, and it would literally be another move, just like we did when we went from North Myanis to alternate sites. We would be moving from OG, Cos Cob, and Parkway.
Right.
And moving into the new space.
Yeah. I'm just trying to find out. I appreciate that. I was just trying to find out how solid these numbers are. So Dan, what, do I, am I reading this properly? The original request was 8.1, but the new cost is 4.7?
That's correct.
So we really only need 4.7 to do this. We didn't need 8.1?
Correct.
Okay. I suppose that's a good outcome.
It is a great outcome. And remember that when we called out the 8.1, we said that there was a lot of contingency and a very high-level estimate for the preventative work. So we knew, we knew it was going to come down.
Yeah. And I think when the 8.1 was originally discussed, it was only for the demo and then the rebuild. Alternate space, I always understood would be a separate item. So this is even better if it's all included. My question is to you, Dan, now that we've got the whole thing pulled apart, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked before. I know everybody wants to get back as quickly as possible and what have you. But, you know, the school community, I'm not so sure is completely processed, that now they're only going to have one bite at this apple for the next 20 years. And I'm wondering, Dan, if there's anything that should be added to this, because we've got the whole thing pulled apart. I realize you tried to put it, you know, particularly when this was asked by, in the RTM meetings, I'm sure that maybe Dr. Jones sent along my question that was asked by RTM members in District 12. By the way, full disclosure, this is my own neighborhood. This is my own neighborhood school. So, but, you know, there were two schools of thought. One was spend whatever it takes, do it in 90 days, don't do the alternate. You know, that was somebody's question, and I think you guys fielded that appropriately. But the other questions that came out were, is there anything else in the rush to get it done that we should be doing because it's all pulled apart, and it's the right thing to do? Is there anything that should be added here, Dan?
You know, I, I wouldn't say no.
I like what you did on HVAC as an example. That's a great add.
Well, some of the things maybe you don't see, Peter, is that we did take into consideration some of the older infrastructure. There's some pipes that are in the building that are circa 1925. We're replacing those. Anything that we thought could even add to the assets or protect the assets, we changed. So there's some, there's a lot of wooden millwork that was damaged or, or whatever. Still usable, but in pretty bad shape. We're, we're replacing all that. The windowsill.
Lighting, Dan.
I was getting to the lighting, Sean. The windowsills also would.
He's so excited.
The, the windowsills are also wood and are stained and, and cracked. We're changing those out to a corian type of material. Again, all the countertops in the classrooms, all the sinks, we certainly don't want to have another Cos Cob issue. So we're replacing all the sinks that are in the classroom. As Sean stated, we're changing all the lighting. That is part of the incentive program that was, it just happened to be happening at the same time. That would have been an item I would have said, let's change while we're in there. There's really not, the building has got great bones. The bathrooms in the, that part of the building were renovated, I think, within the last five or six years. We do have a separate project to replace the bathrooms in the kindergarten wing that was designed and ready to be put out for bid this summer. We put the brakes on that because we didn't know how that was going to dovetail with the rest of this project. There might be an opportunity to do that at the same time. Right now, I don't even want to explore that. We have, we have the dollars, we have the design, but it's, it might be a little bit too much to handle.
So 4.7 is enough?
Yes.
To get this done. Okay. Well, it seems like this process worked out in the end. I mean, and now, have you guys already, well, when did you open these bids, and you got it, and it was qualified bidder was yesterday? Have you guys already started preliminary contract negotiations?
Yes.
Okay. How long's that going to take?
Soon as we get off the phone.
That's always a hard question until you tell the lawyers to stop.
No, we've, we've been doing it at the same time. So Town Legal's already been reviewing a, you know, turning the RFP into a contract. So.
Okay, so if the other town bodies approve this quickly, this, this approval thing won't be a critical path item. If they take time, it's going to be a problem, right? But if they go quickly, which I understand they're lined up to do, the, the project will go forward, right?
Right. The BET budget is 1 o'clock on Monday, the full BET 6:30 on Monday. And and we've got to, we've got to determine when the RTM committees and full RTM can schedule this. So we're hoping.
Just to that point on the RTM, the moderator did send a note, we're going to submit materials tomorrow for the RTM, and they will figure out the path forward.
Yeah. I would just say, and I know you guys are not necessarily part of this, but let's not make other town bodies the boogeyman. It doesn't help get the project done. It just gets people really agitated. If the BET's stepping forward, which it sounds like they're doing quickly, thank you, BET. I see Mike Mason in the back. Thank you, Michael. And hopefully, the moderator will move as quickly and expeditiously, and, and we can just go get this project done and the kids back in the school. Thanks for all the hard work, guys.
All right. So Tony, Sean, Dan, I'm hoping you can talk us through the timing. I see on the, on the breakout budget, you're expecting the facility rental to run through December, transportation through December. So can you talk to us about the timing?
Do you want me to take that?
Yeah, why don't you do it, Tony?
Yeah, okay. Sorry. Couldn't hear. Yes, for the timing, we are looking that we could go into January, and that's what the company said when they actually did the walkthrough. We are hoping by late December, what will, what will be part of the challenge, and we're just trying to be very transparent upfront, is once the construction is done, we have a lot of approvals with this project that have to go through town approvals. And that can sometimes halt us a little bit and go a little bit slower. So we're being very realistic about that. So it, it is a big project, and we will, we are expecting to be, if we have an alternate location, it's definitely going to be through the fall semester. And that's what, what the, the construction team has said.
And I know that, that Sean mentioned earlier, like issues with supplies. Can you talk about the timing of that? I mean, obviously, once the BET acts and the RTM acts and the contract gets signed, like, how quickly are they going to be able to get supplies?
Well, once they sign the contract, then they will be able to start their ordering and moving forward. That's why time is of the essence, because we are told right now, and Dan could definitely speak to, you know, the supply issue, but there's a supply and demand issue, and especially going into the summer where there are so many projects, and they need to get stuff ordered so that they can get the work started. So every, and if you look at it this way, when you're, you know, a month of alternate site is $170,000. If this is four weeks late, that's another $170,000 just for off-site plus the buses.
Ms. Downey?
Just a question. I mean, ultimately, might insurance cover the alternate space location? I mean, we, we obviously don't know that right now, but it's certainly something we would try for.
We, and Sean can speak to this. I know he's working so closely, you know, with risk management. We're putting everything forward that we can. And Megan Zanesky handles that for the town and does the terrific job trying to maximize what we can get.
Peter, I have a question.
Ms. Kowalski.
Sure. So I, I understand that there's information that can't be disclosed about the, the rental facility. And I'm a little, I have some concerns, just that the board doesn't know anything about this, right? We don't know where it is. We don't know the setup. We don't know the, the type of contract we're entering into. Is this a month-to-month? What happens? Are we only able to rent it for five months? What happens if we have an overage? Can we go, can we get it for the next month? Is the contract going to have to be at a minimum for a certain period of time? I'm just, I'm a little leery that the board has no idea. I'm not complaining about the price. I'm just, I'm complaining, I'm not complaining. I'm concerned that we don't know anything, and I mean anything, about where this alternative facility is, the conditions, it's the cost, the terms of the contract. And I think these are really important things that the board needs to know at some point to understand what we're spending a million dollars on.
I think right now, just, just realized that from the contract language perspective, it all goes through the Town of Greenwich Legal. So they're working between, our Town of Greenwich Legal is working with the the other, uh, land attorney that handles and manages the site. Um, we do have flexibility in the contract that is written in to extend, or if we were done a month early, there is flexibility that is written in there, but that's part of what you negotiate back and forth as well. Um, and it is, um, it is a site that is in a reasonable distance. That was a, another key component. We've heard from several parents, um, that have had children traveling to Parkway and it's, it's quite a distance for children to be on the bus. Um, so we've been very cognizant that it's, um, you know, it's close. Um, so I think I answered most, most of those, but it, it is right now there, it's going back and forth between legal, between both teams.
So I'd make two observations. One, um, well, a question which is, when will we get to know more information? And two, i- is it a, a, a better process and procedure for the board to go into an executive session to get more information on the contract itself?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, one, it's not posted for tonight, so we certainly couldn't do it, but I think we'll, we'll figure out that way or Dr. Jones can let us know as things progress on the legal side, but I'm not sure it qualifies for executive sessions. So let me, let me dive into that with the town attorney and just make sure. All right, other discussion on the item? All right. So what will happen is once we vote, uh, Tony, Sean, Dan are going to be working on some questions they received from the BET, most of which they've answered tonight for us, so they already know the answers. Uh, we're going to share that with the BET. They're having the Budget Committee meeting on Monday at one. Uh, BET meeting is six, Mike? 6:30 on Monday night. Uh, we will be sharing the interim request with the, uh, town clerk and the RTM moderator tomorrow, and, uh, as soon as we have information from them, we'll share that back with the board. Uh, but we, uh, we did give them as much notice as we could. The, uh, you know, I think everybody's in it together. And I know Dr. Jones mentioned the, all of the approvals that will be necessary on the back end. Uh, we do have a commitment from the first selectmen that, uh, they will work expeditiously uh, to make sure that, uh, that they are in the building as soon as we have them in the building. So uh, we will move forward, uh, with that approach. All right. So, uh, the motion on the table is for the additional request, interim request for North Myanis and the amount of $2,597,912. Uh, Bernstein is a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes eight zero. Uh, you know, I, I keep, can't say it enough. We're trying to move as expeditiously as we can and, uh, and I want to thank our, our staff for doing the same. All right. With that, the next item. Thank, thank you to the parents of North Myanis for being patient.
Thanks for staying this late.
All right. Um, the next item is the healthy food certification. Uh, this is a lovely statutory one. It's got two, two motions that we have to approve with the exact wording. So I will make them apologize for the length of them. Let me put my glasses on. I need that for this. All right. So pursuant to Connecticut General, uh, I move pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 10 dash 215 F. The Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in these schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups, period. Is there a second for this motion? Ms. Downey, thank you. So this is complete Hartford overreach. Uh, Dr. Carabillo. You're muted, Ann, for the third time. I caught you.
I know, and I almost caught myself before I started speaking. So this is something that we do every single year. Last year, we added Greenwich Public, uh, Greenwich High School to this. So all of our schools, uh, right now, uh, are on NSLP and we hope that you will approve this.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a, uh, a quick roll call on the first motion. Uh, Bernstein is a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Bear with me while I read the second motion. Thank you, Connecticut. The Board of Educa, I move that the Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale of students, so allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut, Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in section 10 dash 221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. Three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays and inter-scholastic debates are events, but soccer practices play rehearsals and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is held. No period, oddly. All right. Is there a second for that motion? Ms. Hirsch? All right, Dr. Carabillo, unless you're going to tell me something different, is this the same?
Um, yes, it is ostensibly the same. The only difference is at the Greenwich High School, we had to assure that there would be no other foodstuffs sold at any of the school events. The school, the regular school day, that if anything was sold separately, it had to be after the regular school day. And not sold by.
Okay, so special events held after the school day, so a half hour after the school day, if I read that correctly. All right. Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, uh, we will take your roll call vote on this motion. Bernstein, yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously eight zero. Thank you, Dr. Carabillo. All right. Next up is the financial and staffing report. Does somebody want to make a motion to accept the financial and staffing report? Ms. Stowe, is there a second? Ms. Downey. All right, Mr. O'Keefe, take it away.
Thank you. Okay, uh, through the month of April, our, uh, expense is 130.6 million, which is just about 80% attainment of the full year budget of 163.4. Uh, compared to the same period last year, spending is up 6.4%. And you, you probably recall from last month, we were pretty flattish. And the reason why we're all of a sudden up 6.4% year to year is because in the month of April, we had a three pay, uh, month. Whereas in, uh, in the prior year, the three pay month, the second three pay month came in the month of May. So what we're going to see is that 6.4% year to year growth as of April decreased back down to a flattish number, uh, next month. So it's artificially inflated. Um, so let's see, what else? Um, so in terms of why we're, we're up right now, it's, you know, salaries, and I mentioned the three pay month. Also, uh, also due to COVID expenses not yet transferred to the grant fund. Uh, also, uh, higher outplace tuition and settlement tuition. And then the increases are offset by savings in the following. Uh, as I've mentioned, uh, since probably October, summer school and E S Y savings. Uh, and then transportation, we knew we had some savings from the summer. Uh, but, uh, the savings in transportation have been accumulating all year long due to athletics, late bus, uh, remote and hybrid schedules, including going full remote, uh, you know, for a week following two of our vacation breaks. Fuel savings, temporary services, athletics expenses and so on. So we, we have a lot of savings. Um, so in terms of the full year forecast, um, we're, we are, we are now in the process of closing out, um, purchase orders. We've suspended, uh, new requisitions. So it'll be on an exception basis only. And at this point in time, I, I am comfortable that, uh, we have enough savings that, uh, we'd be able to offset the anticipated $2.2 million exposure in special ed. So, and as far as additional savings, we're, we're working it by account, closing out purchase orders. Uh, as I said, we've, uh, suspended, uh, new requisitions and handled it on a one by one basis. And so I do believe we'll have additional savings COVID related. Uh, but I'm not yet ready to declare what that is yet. So rather than give you a number that I'll have to bridge later on, I, I just want to say that in addition to the savings that will what potentially offset the outplace tuition, I believe we'll have some additional savings. Uh, capital. Overall capital, um, the act, the actual available balance actually increased, uh, by about $2 million month to month to 20.7. And the reason for that was the interim, the interim appropriation for 2.1 that we received from, uh, North Myanis. So, uh, so excluding that, we're, we're basically flat to the previous month in terms of available balance. And since the start of the year, uh, the fiscal year, our capital available balance has uh, decreased by more than 17 million or about 48% of the uh, the available balance at the start of the year. So making a lot of progress. School lunch, uh, year to date revenue through April, a million 598,000 continues to lag, uh, compared to the same period, uh, last year when we recorded 2,903,000. So a year to year decrease of 1.3 million. Uh, the big decrease driven by cash sales, which are down year to year by a million 869, uh, but partly offset by, uh, higher reimbursements, which are up year to year by 555,000. On the expense side, uh, we're at 3,028, uh, this year versus 3,770, uh, in the same period last year. So a year to year decrease of about $740,000. And that's primarily due to lower salaries and, uh, lower food costs and supply costs. Um, and then, as I mentioned earlier, uh, you know, every month that we do have unbudgeted transportation costs related to food services delivery. Uh, that will be, it's, it's on our COVID list to be, uh, recovered. So that, that expense will come out of these numbers. Um, let's see. So in terms of the forecast, um, we're forecasting overall revenue will come in around, uh, 2,816,000 or approximately, uh, 1.342 million, uh, below budget. Uh, compared to last month, this is actually a forecast improvement uh, because of our reimbursements went up a couple hundred thousand. Um, of the, of the $1.3 million shortfall, uh, again, it's cash sales that are expected to be under budget by about $2.8 million, but partly offset by, uh, the reimbursements, which will exceed budget by about 1.5 million. On the expense side, um, uh, we expect to come in at, uh, 3,644 before transferring out the, uh, the transportation. Uh, after that transfer, we expect to come in at 3,364,000, uh, which would be an under run to budget of about 930,000. Bottom line, uh, we're looking at, um, a, once we, once we receive the, the general fund contribution of 250 and the transfer out of 280 for transportation, we're looking like we're going to be in a although it's a deficit, it's significantly improved from the prior months. We're, we're looking at about $298,000 deficit. So, and it's possible with reimbursements that could still improve. Um, towards the end of the package, uh, there's a chart that I've been talking to all year on outplace tuition. Uh, hasn't really changed that much. Uh, basically, um, it's consistent with what we've said uh, previously that we're looking at about a $2.2 million over budget in that line. And as I said earlier, uh, I believe we have, uh, enough savings to offset that. Um, let's see, uh, well, onto COVID, the, the last two charts in the package. As I've mentioned, we have four COVID related grants, ESER 1, 758,160. We need to spend that money by September 22 and essentially we already have spent it. Uh, the coronavirus relief fund is a, uh, a grant of 1,203,684. We, uh, have already spent that. It needed to be spent by December of '22, but as I said, we've already spent it. Uh, and then in ESER 2, the grant amount is 400, 4,268,046, which needs to be spent by September of '23. And, uh, we are, we are already proposing, uh, to recover 2.7 million of that, uh, uh, this year. So, and then the remaining 1.5 we would, uh, use for, for, uh, for '21, '22. As far as the ARP goes, uh, previously, we mentioned that the, the grant amount was 10,215,000. Uh, we recently were at a, uh, conference call with the State Department of Education where we learned that the number came down about 600,000. So it's down to 9,585,423. That's the final number. And, uh, we inquired as to why there was a difference. Uh, the number that 10,200,000 we got from Congressman, uh, Rhimes and, uh, apparently that was just a rough estimate at that point. Um, so the last, the last page in the package is, is basically just a, it's a, almost like a journal entry. So we, we, to, to recover these expenses out of our operating fund, we had to request uh, an appropriation. Essentially, it's establishing a budget in a, in a grant fund at the town. And that was approved by the BET. So, you know, we'll be moving 758,000 to the ESER 1 grant fund. A million 203,685 to the coronavirus relief fund over in that, uh, grant fund. And then, as I said, 2.7 million dollars of ESER 2 spending over to the, uh, ESER 2 grant fund. The ARP fund has not yet been established, but we'll be working on that. You know, we are, before we do anything with that, we've got to submit, um, documentation to the, uh, to the state and they have to approve it. And I think, uh, Tony mentioned that, uh, we'll have to get, uh, community, uh, input on that spending as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Sean. So I guess the, the good news takeaway here is we're going to, uh, end in the black. You're just controlling expenses carefully to, to figure out what that number is.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions on the, uh, financial and staffing report? Ms. Hirsch?
Um, I had a few questions, uh, in regards to the staffing report. Um, I saw that the media program coordinator position, which I believe is vacant for a while now. Um, uh, you know, is still vacant and I'm wondering if we're looking to fill that and what that timeline might be.
Tony, can I ask you to take that one?
Sorry, I had to find the page. Um, I'll have to follow that up for you, Ms. Hirsch.
Okay. Well, then I, I would assume that the, my next question or two would, will probably go in the same category. Um, I noted that there were several positions noted as being on hold, including the two media assistants um, for Greenwich, uh, Greenwich High School and one for Central Middle School. And I didn't know if we'd be filling those prior to or for next year. Um, and the same goes for the food service manager positions for K8 and for GHS is there noted being on hold. Um, I didn't know if this was a change, due to the change in food service this year, um, and if we'll be filling those roles prior to next year.
Um, they have set like this, um, for the whole year. So we'll all have to review those again, um, with HR. I believe one of the food service, um, should actually be in elimination position that should have gotten, should have been moved up, um, but I will follow that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. The motion on the table is to accept the monthly financial and staffing report. Uh, Bernstein's a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher?
Yep.
All right. Uh, just before we get to agenda planning and, uh, and take our leave of this, I just want to make note, tonight's meeting would have been at North Myanis, uh, had COVID not occurred uh, and the roof not collapsed. So just worth noting for the record. Uh, in terms of agenda planning, so Mr. Kelly, it sounds like we may need to meet on the trees. Uh, we may need an executive session to discuss whether or not we want to pursue a legal appeal. So folks, uh, it will be very soon. I will send a note out probably to. So folks, uh, it will be very soon. I will send a note out probably tomorrow, looking for available times. Uh, so be ready for that. The other item that we will absolutely be scheduling, uh, in short order is the results of the special education audit. Uh, that, uh, Dr. Jones, we need to figure out from, uh, from our, our friends at the, uh, at the firm, uh, when they're going to be ready to present. Uh, I will, uh, suggest we do that at a separate meeting. So once we have sense of their timing, again, I will reach out to everybody in terms of scheduling. Um, and there'll be two parts to that. One is the, uh, results of the audit. And then the second part is discussion about the action plan. I think those are probably going to be two meetings. Uh, and at the second meeting, I would presume we'll probably want to take public comment. Uh, the other item, I think, Ms. Hirsch, you noted, CAC is going to have a report for us. So we've got two meetings already scheduled in June. Uh, one is a retreat. The other is the, uh, business meeting. So if you could check with them on the timing.
Um, they'd like to be added to our business meeting, uh, in June. The report was approved, uh, and finalized by CAC last, at last night's meeting. So they are ready to submit it to us.
Okay. We'll take a look at the agendas for those meetings just so that we can balance them because we do want to make sure we're, uh, we're not overloading any single meeting. All right. Anything else for agenda planning? Hearing, one request from Ms. Hirsch.
Sorry, just, uh, you know, CAC had requested that they not be put on the same docket just because of they are the same subject as our audit. Um, so as to not get lost in that.
It, it would be a separate meeting. The audit is going to be in and of itself. That is just going to be a report out to the board. All right. Uh, with that, Mr. Kelly, I believe you have a motion.
One second. Sorry. It's a clarification point. Sorry, Joe. Um, you said we were going to go into an executive session to discuss the results of the audit.
No, no, the tree ward.
No, the tree.
The tree ward, I'm saying, okay.
Right, because that would be potentially pursuing litigation. And so that is an exception to FOIA. So we'd have to have a discussion. Uh, any vote to pursue litigation, that would be in a public session.
Right.
Can't vote in an executive session.
Understood. So we would need to do that.
Soon.
Soon, because we have ten days and we've already had four, so we have six days.
Which is why I'm going to send a note to the board tomorrow with a couple of times and check everybody's availability, but it, it probably will be early next week. So watch your calendars. And Michael will remind me that we have twenty four hours, uh, posting notice. So. All right. With that, uh, Mr. Kelly, get a motion you want to make?
Well, I'd like to, on a lighter note, make a, uh, suggest something. Uh, on, uh, Monday, uh, May thirty first, there is the Memorial Day Parade in Old Greenwich. Uh, I would like to suggest that as the Board of Ed, we march in that parade, we get our banner uh, and show up in March. It's time to get outside and time to get life back to normal. Uh, it's, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I will second your motion and confirm that there is a banner at the Havemeyer Building that we can use. All right. Uh, motion is to adjourn. Bernstein's a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yep.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yeah.
Olson?
Yes.
And Cher?
Yep.
All right. We adjourn. Thank you, everybody.